All right. We will call this meeting an order. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we move on to roll call.
Councilmember Hall?
Present.
Councilmember Mizouni?
Here.
Councilmember Palfini?
Here.
Councilmember Tabalero?
Here.
Mayor Parham?
Present. Okay, now we're on to acceptance of agenda and urgency items. This is where we move to accept the agenda as posted or move to add or delete items.
I would like to make the motion to change the body of the legis-- of item number, which one was that Sandy? Help out here.
That was item number...
Seven, four, D.
Yeah, D.
Four, D. Change the-- leave the title the same and change the body of the language? The language of the body, somewhere around there.
To reference the Lake Street Rehabilitation Project?
Yes. And that's it.
All right, any other agenda urgency items? Okay, we'll move on to non-agenda public comments.
You want to take a motion on that one?
My apologies.
I mean, there was a motion, I understand.
I'll second.
Wait a second, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to non-agenda public comment. This is a point in time for the public to come up, make any comments on items that are not in tonight's agenda. I am very enthused that we actually have some public here tonight. Thank you all for being here. Seeing as there is no non-agenda public comment, we will move on to council member announcements, meeting reports, and comments. And we will start with Councilmember Hall.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Mizouni?
I do not either.
Okay, Councilwoman Tabalero?
Yes, I do. First of all, I was gone for three weeks, and when I came back into town, there were three buildings in town that got painted. One on Main Street, one on the Boulevard, the two on the Boulevard. Anyway, I love new painted buildings, and I want to thank you to those whomever did them, thank you, because they look lovely. And then, a quick story, when we first moved to town, I was pregnant with my daughter, and this man came to my door and told me I couldn't have a 10-foot fence, and he wasn't wearing any identifying shirt, and he was not in any identifying pickup truck. And I said, "Who are you? Get off my lawn." And it was a city guy. And since then, the City Public Works men, women, are there any women, people, they are all wearing identified shirts that say City of Weed, and they're bright, so we won't run over them. And now they have new logos on the side of their trucks, and they're beautiful, and thank you, Craig.
Thank you for pointing.
Yes. And the circus that we had last year in October is coming back, August 1st through the 4th. And if anybody did not see that, you need to go see it. It was so much fun.
For sure.
They have adult days, and they have kid days, but it was just so much fun. So I highly recommend anybody doing that. And then, I can't find my paper. Ken, do you have yours? There you go. Tomorrow night is movie night. Tomorrow night is movie night at Baller Park. Eight-thirty? And...
What's the movie?
Goonies.
Yeah.
And you can all go all at the same time. I've never seen Goonies. I know.
Oh, my gosh.
I blame my children. So, I hope we get a lot of people at that, and we can do that a couple times this summer. Jeremy? And then, is this the time to ask about next month's meeting getting changed, the
You can ask about it, we can't have a vote on it.
Okay. I'm asking about next month's meeting getting changed, date. And that's all I have.
On your suggestion for the next agenda item for our meeting, were you proposing a day?
An item?
You were proposing a change of the council meeting. What day you want?
Anytime but Carnival weekend.
Is that the 17th?
Well, Carnival is 11, 12, 13.
11, 12, 13, okay.
And our next meeting would... Oh, and our next meeting would be on the 11th, so...
Do it on the 4th.
Can't do it on the 4th.
10 or 18?
18. That can be up to the rest of the people.
18 would be regular, and so we should agendize that for next month?
Well, we, yeah, I mean, we have a regular meeting schedule, so what you would, what you'd have to talk to the mayor and city manager about is scheduling a special meeting to conduct the business that you would otherwise have on a, on a regular meeting day.
All right, let me look at that. Okay, Mayor Protim Palfini, you have any announcements?
I would just reiterate what Sue said about movie night, and the, again with the circus. We have Carnival, as we just discussed, coming up on the 11th, and there's also a food drive, I believe, on the 19th of this month. I'll be posting it on Facebook, I don't have the post yet. That's it.
All right, well, I know I say this often, but I'd like to give a sincere thanks to the city staff. Our last round of events we had in May were very successful, both because of Public Works' fire and PD's support. I've noticed the fire department out working on fire mitigation, and that's very much well appreciated. And I did receive a letter from the commander at CHP, although this is something that our PD does quite often, we are being recognized by law enforcement outside of our community for the work that they're doing with curtailing drug trafficking through the town and the area, and of course, the normal work that's done to keep our city safe and well-running. So, very much appreciate that, and all the people behind the scenes here at City Hall that make that happen. We're one of the few cities in this county that enjoys a safe and very clean environment because of the work that our city staff does to promote that. Also, I noticed with the Tesla lot opening, that there's been a lot of traffic, a lot of usage there, the charging stations, as well as a lot of traffic to the businesses on Main Street. So I think that's very well that we've taken an empty lot and actually made it useful for the town. And then also, just to, you know, right on the coattails of my fellow council members, would like to urge the public to take advantage of all the events that we have going on between the circus, the free movie night coming up, and Carnival. And would like to thank 22nd Avenue Media for putting together that free movie night. We very much appreciate that you guys are doing that for the community. It's nice that our community, including our children, can have something positive and safe that they can go do, especially with the budgetary constraints that we face these days. With that said, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd just add a little rah-rah to the circus. Anybody hasn't, this circus is about physical artistry. It's fantastic. It's, you know, we, I went to it last year, I'll just go, the whole time. It really is special. It's a touch of class.
All right. So moving on to the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull item A. See if we could table that for a later date.
So item A, we would like to pull from consent and move it to the regular agenda for discussion?
Yeah. Just to table it for a later date.
Yeah, it can be pulled, and it would be then considered under item seven separately.
Okay. So we'll pull item A to be under as item seven on the regular agenda. Any other items in the consent that require changes or discussion?
Public comment.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
Um, are you gonna say, "Okay, go"? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor of approving the consent agenda with the removal of item one?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, well, we'll now move on to items removed from consent. The item is Human Resources. By motion, council will consider second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance number 475-2024, in ordinance amending section 2.12.070 of chapter 2.12 and chapter 2.16 of Title II of the Weed Municipal Code regarding the city manager appointment authority over city officials and fire department.
So this was a, this is an ordinance that was introduced by the council at the last meeting, which our office prepared. And essentially, what it does is further streamlines the city council, city manager form of government by placing the appointment power over all department heads and city officials, other than myself, obviously, with the city manager. And that included the clerk, the city clerk, city treasurer, and the fire chief, and actually all subordinate officers of the fire department were not included as appointees hired and fired by the city manager. So those were the cleanups that we made to that ordinance. Happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Any questions or discussion on that?
I'd just like to table it and maybe go into, if it's possible, if we can do a closed-session meeting with council, or if not, just to get a better, talk about it a little bit more. It wasn't real clear on what, this wasn't clear to me, because this has always been where the council was, the city clerk, fire department was under the council. It was under the council when Ron was here. He's the one that changed it, but it never did change.
So I don't think that we have a basis for a closed session, but certainly, an open session discussion is always warranted with respect to ordinances. If I could quickly respond, so, a city, there's different forms of government for the city. So there's the, previously in Weed, you had a city administrator form of government in which, which is similar to the county form of government, where department heads report directly to the city council and not to one central individual, the city manager, who's in charge of the day-to-day, and that usually involves more day-to-day activities by the council. The prevailing way of organizing city government is with the city council, city manager form of government, which is more similar to how corporations are run, in that you've got a CEO, in this case, a city manager, who operates the day-to-day, and the council is, supervises the policy direction of the city, and the city manager implements that. The city clerk position, like the city attorney position, predates the city council, city manager form of government. So those are offices that are required by all general law cities. And so, in fact, city attorneys and city clerks can be elected. They can be appointed by the city council, or they can be appointed by a city manager. Here, at least when I started, the city clerk was appointed by the city council, and my understanding is that was a vestige of the change from the city administrator form of government to the city manager form of government. But there's, but it causes some confusion sometimes, because, for example, an elected city clerk often doesn't do all the things that a city clerk in a city does. They kind of just oversee, make sure that the elections has occurred, they make sure that the minutes are being kept orderly, you know, that the notices are going out. Most elected city clerks have a staff city clerk that actually does all that work. And so, with, you know, I mean, I can't speak to the intricacies of how our city clerk's office operates, but my understanding is that Weed's city clerk, it's a full-time position that entails a lot more than just the obligations that are listed under the government code for the city clerk. And so, the appointment power that the council has over the city clerk really only extends to those functions that are given to a city clerk under the government code. It doesn't extend to the functions that the clerk is doing on a day-to-day basis, as an employee of the city. And so, by streamlining it the way that this ordinance does, it clarifies that the city clerk is an employee of the city, and that individual has responsibilities beyond what's in the government code, and so it centralizes that to the city manager, who has authority over all employees of the city. And then with respect to the fire chief, my understanding is that that section of our code that says that the chief and all subordinate officers are appointed by the city council has actually been superseded. So I, my understanding is that the intent of the council, when it adopted the city council, city manager form of government, it placed the appointment power over the fire chief and all subordinate officers with the city manager. And so, that's the way I actually read our code, and so the revisions in here simply implement what I believe is already the lawful way in which the city operates into the ordinance, so that it's clear for anybody who reads the ordinance that the city manager has authority. And my understanding is that the fire chief was hired by the city manager at the time.
And I would chide in that you're correct. The city fire chief was hired by our prior city administrator. I think Mark wanted to table this, because there was a little confusion felt as to the intent of the action with the city clerk. And so, some discussion, we wanted, at least I want some discussion on the reasoning behind it, because there seems to be some confusion as to roles and responsibilities, and whether, and that's why I think it would be better off in a closed-session setting versus an open-session setting, because it has to do with employee, employer positioning, which we normally don't discuss in a closed session.
In closed session?
Open session, excuse me.
Yeah, no, in closed session, you, this council...
Can you not talk about personal...
No, yeah, we should not, we should not be talking about personnel issues in open session, but that's not, that's not what's, that's not what's before you with this ordinance.
Who do you talk to about that?
But we, but can we table this until we have a discussion with the personnel? And that would be appropriate in closed session.
The council can discuss performance evaluations of the people that they have the authority over. So they, it would, I do believe that the council would have the ability to have a performance review of those that it appoints, and currently, that includes the city clerk.
Okay.
So that would be an option, but I guess I would just reiterate that the ordinance at this point is not, it's not a personnel ordinance, it's simply, it's about the power of a appointment.
And I, and I get that, but the fact that it's been written, and it's been voted on, it doesn't become part of the city until we have a second reading and approval. We're not asking anybody to rewrite anything. I think the conversation is asking if we can have further discussion, and if a review is necessary, then so be a, a review would be kind of appropriate.
I don't think a discussion of this ordinance in closed session is appropriate. A discussion of the performance evaluation of the individuals, of the officers that the city council has authority over is permissible.
So can we table it until we get that personnel review?
If that's the will of the council.
Well, I'll make a motion, and we table it till we get...
I'd like to add something.
Huh?
Public comment.
I'm sorry, you're in charge.
You know, I, several of us have been here through the changes, and trying to figure out what is the best way a manager, if it's, you know, with the manager being, as we did with Ron, we switched because there was issues. You know, honestly, I think a discussion is necessary, even for the public, to figure out really what we're doing, or what is the proper way to do it. I mean, the, where we're in right now, if it works, fine, but I think that there's this, there's changes that happened that were, not all of us are real comfortable with, you know, how it's shaken out. You know, just, I think a conversation is needed, personally.
I agree.
I think that, and I don't see an issue that should be tearing us apart at all, it's just something that we, you know...
Have a little bit more discussion.
Discussion, I mean, I'm ignorant to a lot of this, you know, and trying to weigh it out.
So could I make...
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, our role is to advise. We are elected to advise what we think, because we're citizens of the community, what we think should happen with our city government. We're not here to micromanage the fire chief, or the police chief, or Public Works, or the city clerk. Now, the city clerk is quote-unquote "under us" because she's the one that sends us the agenda. So in, in her role, that's where, that's where we have a discussion with her and the city manager hereon as our role. Technically, I can't go to Craig and say, you know, "I want to buy a new water tender." That's not my, that's not my role. My role is to go to the city manager and say, "I think we need a water tender," and they go from there. So we're not micromanaging these people that are working here. None of us have an office here, so to know what goes on from 7:30 to 5:30 every day, I, I don't know. Things happen. Our fire department puts out fires. Our police department nabs people all the time, which is great. We, my toilet flushes, my water runs, and all those are great things. Sandy is very good at her job with getting us the information, reminding us of things that we forget. So I think that all this thing is doing is just making, making the funnel work, that you have the person in charge, and we're in charge of that person, because that's our job, is to be in charge of him. And then he's in charge of the people that are working in this building, not us. So, I don't know, I don't, I think it's fine, I get it.
So, I had asked for some historical knowledge, and the person that's been here the longest was Craig Sharp, and Craig had informed me that the city clerk had always been under the supervision of the city manager, always. Even though it was a city administrator form of government, they were under the city manager. So...
It was not a city administrator. It wasn't, it wasn't a city manager.
Yes, it was a city administrator, but the clerk answered to the city manager.
That's why I think we need to have a discussion, because I may have something that I don't agree with you on, but again, that's why I want to have a discussion.
This is nothing, I'm not debating, I'm just giving some facts.
Okay, so, it seems like we have some misunderstandings of the form of government, and quite frankly, we've been operating halfway in between both forms of government at the previous councils. But it sounds like we have a majority that want to take, consider this for discussion, and this is quickly getting out of order and stopping us from conducting further business on the agenda, so...
So I'll make a motion then. Can I make a motion that we tabled this consent item?
A second.
And at the same time, have a performance review done for our city clerk?
So I think, one, I haven't seen a performance review in the year and a half I've been on this council, so I would like to see us move forward with a performance review across the board, specifically because the council majority is requesting a review of those people that report to the council, so we need to do the same for the other people that report to this council as well.
Well, this is not on the agenda, though.
Which is true.
But, so right now, we don't have, this, right now, the contention here is that the city clerk, the finance director, and the fire department are reporting to the council.
No.
And...
The treasurer.
The treasurer. And, so we, my issue here is, we're not going to ask for one person's review, and not the other departments that are falling to that responsibility.
Might I suggest, because performance reviews is not on the agenda?
Okay.
So we technically should not be able to take action on that.
So I'll make, so I withdraw.
But I think the motion, if it's simply to table, then the next step would be to have the mayor work with the city manager to agendize a performance review, if that is the, if that's their goal.
All right, we have a motion on the table.
But we do have to take public comment.
Do we have any public comments?
Sorry, folks.
Was not expecting this tonight. All right, well, seeing as there is no public comments...
I second it.
We have a motion, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I oppose. I'm not a micromanager.
And I will abstain from this, so motion will carry three to two, and we will move on now to council business. All right, Public Works, by motion, council will consider introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance number 476-2024, and ordinance amending section 8.08, garbage of Title VIII, health and safety of the Weed Municipal Code.
I will present this on behalf of Public Works, who requested some revisions to our garbage ordinance. There's really only two changes, and I do believe there is a redlined copy for the public at the back and for council. The two changes are, first, our current ordinance allows people to take their own trash to the dump, but it nevertheless requires them to pay for trash services. So this changes that and allows the public, anyone from the public to remove trash from their home on their own, take it to the dump, take it to a lawful dumping ground. To do so, they just need to inform the city that they're doing so, so the city can keep track of that, and so that the hauler knows that they should not be billed, and so those people wouldn't be billed for trash service. The other change is that when our exclusive franchisee is unable to provide construction or demolition debris removal, then the contractor that's providing, that's doing the construction or demolition, has the authority to remove the construction debris and the demolition debris from the property, and again, take it to a lawful recycling or trash facility. And that would extend to, you know, landscaping, people who are doing landscaping work and stuff like that as well. So those are the two amendments to the garbage, and I would be happy to answer any questions if you have.
I have a question. We, so we are, there is something in there that doesn't allow people to not get their garbage picked up and just put it in their front yard instead, correct?
Well, I mean, they can technically, but we had a situation today where Justin spotted somebody that was doing such a thing, and they were greeted by one of our code enforcement officers, so...
That would be maintaining a public nuisance, and they would be liable under the nuisance provisions of our code.
Because that, I could see that could be the only problem, is that people would just decide not to...
And I did talk to the city of Waireka, they have a similar ordinance, and same thing. They said, you know, it's the same people regardless, you know, they have a franchise agreement too with Waireka Transfer, and same thing happens there, so those people are usually going to be greeted by a code enforcement officer, no matter what, so...
And my understanding is that the spirit of the law with this ordinance change is just so that the citizens of Weed do not have to pay for a service if they are not using that service. The other side of that is that if we have people rebuilding homes, building new homes, or businesses, or landscaping for either, that they are able to take care of that with their contractors or themselves in that kind of capacity. We want to promote rebuilding of homes and, you know, revitalize... We want to promote rebuilding of, of homes and the, you know, revitalization of downtown as well as adding new businesses, so, um, I think this will help streamline those efforts. Do we have any other questions from council? Do we have any public comment? No.
Nothing on garbage? No, nothing. Come on, Joe.
And just to be clear, for those that are watching at home, um, as was previously stated, this does not mean you can collect garbage in your yard. We will cite you for nuisance if you intend or attempt to do such a thing. We'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to read by title only ordinance number four seven six dash two zero two four and ordinance amending section eight point oh eight, garbage of title eight, health and safety of the Weed municipal code.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Finance, by motion, council will consider approval of resolution number two five dash two zero two four, adopting budget adjustments for the city of Weed and close out fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Um, this is a, a little tardy, but just kind of procedural, and we're getting ready to start our twenty-two, twenty-three audit. There are multiple budget adjustments that should have been done several months ago just to close out the year. We'd just like to clean that up and, um, kind of move forward, um, with, with the next fiscal year.
All right, any questions?
Is there, was there a specific number on the allocation on that adjustment? Have you, have you done twenty-two, twenty-three yet?
A, a number as far as.
How much we need to adjust our budget?
It's, it's the one fifty-five.
One fifty-five, I'm not looking at.
One oh-nine.
Yeah, we, the general fund was in a deficit position as of the actual six thirty numbers of the hundred and fifty-five thousand that we would need to transfer funds.
Where's that coming from?
Um, that comes from, where we would take that from is from Fund Thirty-seven, which is, um, where we're holding the Roseburg settlement money.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussions from council? Any public comment?
Anybody love budgets out there? Uh, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five dash two oh two four, adopting budget adjustments for the city of Weed and close out the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Finance, by motion, council will consider approval of resolution number two six dash two zero two four, adopting budget adjustments for the city of Weed general fund for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
So same thing, um, just twenty-three, twenty-four, these are actually timely budget adjustments. Um, I, it includes year-end projections, um, based on estimates to, to cover our expenses through June thirtieth. We, again, are in a deficit position in the general fund. We would need to transfer, um, two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and ten from Fund Thirty-seven to cover our deficit for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
That, that's, that's a lot of money that we're doing in here, so why are we in that hole?
Um, so I wasn't here.
That's a lot of money to be taken from one account to put in a general fund when, at one point, I heard we were flush.
So I, I wasn't here for the budget process for, um, this year's budget, um, and I think probably going forward, we would like to have a more accurate budget and, and be monitoring that, um, more closely and, and hopefully operate, our operating expenses for the general fund would hopefully fall within those revenues that come into the general fund, which would be our T O T, our property taxes, those types of revenues, um, and, and if we have extraordinary expenses, that, that we would be able to plan for those and, um, in advance, plan where those funds are going to come from, rather than retroactively saying, okay, we, we came in, in the negative, we're in the red, we're, you know, we've got to move some money to cover that. So, um, I, it, I, the budgeting process, it, it's a really an ongoing thing, um, that we work, we should be working on throughout the year. I know Steve has talked to me several times, I've called him up and said, Steve, you've got to move some budget, and you're, you're, you're going over, so it, I mean, that would be something that, that we would be doing. Hopefully, we would, would make a better budget in the beginning, that, that, looking at our prior couple of years now and, and trying to make things a little more accurate, so we know, council knows, and we know where we are financially, we're going to put our plans in there. We have some big projects that we're planning for, um, we, we want to pinpoint where those revenues are coming from and have all that planned out ahead of time, have it approved by council, and then hopefully, you know, the goal would be to operate within those constraints. That being said, things happen, um, and when those things happen, you know, then we'd have to come, we would come back to council and say, you know, but, you know, City Hall flooded, we had, you know, a, a big cleanup expense, we didn't budget for it, you know, this, you know, we would come to council and, and be more proactive, um, on the budget rather than, than looking at it in June when, when these things have already happened. Um, and we, we really can't fix what's happened.
I, I think we'll be, we'll be able to define what happened when you're done catching up. Is that, is that my?
I, next month, I'll be, I'm going to spend this month basically working on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, which I plan to bring, um, next month, and, um, we, we do have a budget in place, but, but I'm planning on making revisions to that budget, um, based on my discussions with the department heads and, and the city manager, um, based on the plans we have for the city for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Jill got here in the middle of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Yeah.
And has been bringing budget adjustments to this, uh, body almost every single month because of what's happened. And for those in the public that are not aware, we've had four finance directors in the last five years, so it's a lot of catch-up and trying to figure out, you know, um, where we're at and where we're going, but she's doing an excellent job in getting us back on track with, with, in respect to that, so, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Jill. Thank you for talking on track again.
And I'm not real sure of those four, the first one was ever caught up from the one prior to that. I, I, my guess. So, so thank you, Jill. I appreciate that, the hard work.
You're welcome.
Because at my house, when I budget, I budgeted exactly every time.
I'm going to, I'm going to have to ask Scott.
I speak to some of the council about going over it and being able to answer questions and for sure help me out, because those are big numbers. And I thought I was going to fall out of the chair when I saw that, and then when I see where it's coming from, you're taking from here, well, that's a problem. If we didn't have that, then where would we be? I'm just saying, if that wasn't there, then what? We have no money to pay, I mean, that's, to me, is.
That's why we have that. How did we get it?
We're not, we're not going to get paid. I just can't get that.
Well, as a longtime resident of this city and someone who's been not always actively participating, but paying close attention to these meetings, I can't say that this current staff has gone light-years beyond where we were twenty-five years ago as far in regards to how they manage a buzzet, budget, how they run a city and the organization. And I would just like to reciprocate my thanks to Jill for the professionalism you're bringing to not only clean up all of the pasts that you've had to inherit, but making sure we move forward correctly and reconciliably. So thank you for that. Do we have any more comments or discussion from the council?
Nope, I'm good.
Any public comment?
I, I will make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-six dash two oh two four, adopting budget adjustments for the city of Weed general fund for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, on item D, I think this is what most of our, if not all of our, public is here for tonight, and that is the transient occupancy tax. By motion, consider request for T O T and approve allocations.
Oh, there she is.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to request, um, each entity to come forward. I believe everyone is here, um, they can come forward and talk about their, um, projects that they have, and then I believe also, um, the city attorney.
So before we begin that, I do want to make a public announcement. There are several members on this council who are non-paid members of some of these boards that are here tonight requesting T O T funds. So I will start with myself. I am the current sitting president for the Weed Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a, a multi-year member as a local business owner. This is a non-paid position that I do voluntarily, just like my positions with other entities such as Rotary and prior entities here in the city of Weed, um, and we'll move on to Mary Protan Palfini.
Yes, I am currently a, um, excuse me, a board member for the Collier Interpretive and Information Center, um, up north of Wayrica. We are about business promotion in the whole county and not just the, at the city level. I am also the board president of the Sisuke Community Resource Collaborative, a nonprofit organization that operates throughout the county. And that's it for me.
Would that be the Family and Community Resource Center?
Yeah.
And those, correct me if I'm wrong, but those are also non-paid positions?
Yes, they are definitely non-paid positions.
Do we have any other council members that have disclosure for positions on boards that are here tonight for T O T funds?
No.
Okay.
Good for me.
Right. Um, with that said, especially for those of you following along at home and the public, because I know several people have mentioned to me in passing on the street that they watch these videos online, um, one of the reasons that you have several council members past and present that are involved with these organizations is because we have a lack of volunteerism in our community, and just like it was with Cub Power or the Weed Soccer Club or Rotary or any other organization, it is imperative for the culture and the sustainability of our community that people get involved. So I would just like to take this as an opportunity to, to put that out there to the public and challenge people that have able bodies and minds. I have two full-time positions, one being a, owning a business here in town, and I still volunteer ten to twenty hours a week for my community, and I know we all have families and businesses and things to run, but, um, put in some time. You know, and if you can't volunteer to be on a board or you're not comfortable with that, volunteer time, go out and help Rotary with the, the public cleanups, come out and help out at Carnival or other public events, um, even if it's just watering flowers downtown, every little bit that everybody does makes a difference. So, that said, we will.
Let me add to that. I would also like to add all the people that already do volunteer. I know I sit on a couple of boards, but in years past, I know there's a bunch of board members here that have done coaching, they have done other activities with the cemetery, they've done activities with the Rotary and the cleanup and the, and the pavers downtown. So for all of those folks, thank you very much, and that's it for me.
But they're all board members, the majority of everybody.
Preach and choir.
Preach, preach and to the choir, huh?
And that's why I'm addressing our five people that watch us on YouTube. Please tell your friends.
Hey, there's six tonight.
Okay, uh, so moving on to the transient occupancy tax allocations.
Would you like to invite, um, each entity or just have them come up?
I think so. Um, I'm not trying to keep us here till midnight, but I, I think that it's good for each entity to have the representative come up and speak on behalf of their organization. So we'll just go down the line from beginning here and start with the city of Weed.
I believe this is a request for an allocation to help offset, uh, in particular with our overtime in regards to the different events that we have, um, and those expenses, and so that's where the, uh, request for the twenty-five thousand, and I know that's come up as a point of contention with a couple on the council, because some feel that that twenty-five thousand could actually come directly out of the T O T, not this particular portion of it, but the general T O T as well, so, but this, this covers the overtime primarily with, uh, the police department and Public Works.
Next is the Collier Interpretive and Information.
I don't believe a board member is here, so I will speak in their stead. The Collier Interpretive and Information Center is the first stop when you come across the border from Oregon, and it's the last stop as you leave our dear old state. In that center is interpretive information on our wildlife, on our resources, and there is also information on every city. We are currently making a big push to, uh, promote a modern and update website, um, put on by Pusher Inc., who is a professional outfit, hopefully will get us to that success We're also creating a nature walk around the center, and I don't know if everybody has been there, but it's a pretty gorgeous little spot, sitting right next to the Klamath River, um, so with that, normally we have given in the past, uh, funds, we started trying, trying to put the funds through the chamber, but for some reason, there was some lack of communication there, so I'm picking the ball up along with our president, Rennie Cleveland, to request a fifteen-hundred dollar amount. That's it.
And they actually just got the money to put, they got the money from L T C to put in that walk.
Put in, yes.
On Tuesday.
Well, good. We'll have a meeting next Tuesday to tell me about it.
Oops, that's a double sample.
All right, our next, the organization is the Family and Community Resource Center.
Marlene is here.
Hi, my name is Marlene Mosey, from the Cape River, at the Family and Community Resource Center of Weed. Normally Steve Bryan would be here, um, but instead I'm speaking on our behalf, um, so I'm going to ask for three allocations for three different projects. The first one we have is our Kids Day Festival that we do every year, and every year that we've done this, uh, attendance has increased. So, um, we doubled our previous record attendance of one thousand, it was over two thousand residents, and we have, um, children now that are coming from Reading, their parents are bringing them to this festival from Reading, so that's pretty cool. Uh, last year we had two thousand and two hundred and fifty from T O T, and it was used to pay for bounce houses, a thousand dollars was used for the delivery, tear-down, setup, all of that, um, and we were told that that was the price with a nonprofit discount, so. We have magic shows, uh, walk-around magic tricks, balloon tying, um, that was six hundred and seventy, um, and so this year, instead of the two thousand and two hundred and fifty, uh, it's, it's part of the Child Abuse Prevention Month. This is a completely free event for the community, and we're going to be requesting three thousand. Um, our second project is our Summer Fun Camp. This camp, um, is so beneficial to our community in two different ways. One, it definitely provides enrichment activities for, um, the children during the summer while their parents are working. Um, five hundred and twenty dollars last year was used from T O T to provide healthy snacks. Um, this year, however, G N S is no longer providing lunches for campers, um, so we need funding to support healthy food and snacks for those families. It also brings in funds as well, because a lot of children from out of the area who come up and visit their family in this area during the summer, those families like to, to let their kids come, so that's kind of nice, too. We're going to be requesting fifteen hundred for that, because that's an economic advancement as well. And then our last project that we're requesting. And then our last project that we're requesting funds for, last year, we received three hundred from TOT, and it was for our trunk-or-treat. And that attendance rate has also increased each year. We had eight hundred or more last year, and we did run out of candy. We had a bunch of different trunks that went and picked up more supplies for us. So this year, we are going to be asking for six hundred. And that's it. That's what we're asking for.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Is trunk-or-treat a chamber event or?
That's a good question.
A resource center event?
I thought it was a resource center event.
We act, I think we started it. I think the chamber kind of picked it up at a certain point.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has been a chamber event the couple of years I've participated in.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
But there are a lot of organizations, both nonprofits and local businesses, that donate greatly to that.
Cool.
Mine being one of them, and I think this is a great event for our community and definitely want to see that continue.
And all the dentists in town, right?
Yeah.
Maybe we should have like a day camp for dentists.
I think we need to talk to the dentist offices around South County for donations. All right, any other questions from the council? Okay, we will move on to Siskiyou Food Assistance.
Good evening. I'm Denise Spade from, I'm the director of Siskiyou Food Assistance, and it's nice to look around this room. Pretty much all of you have supported our organization at some points or another, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate the consistent funding that we've had for our Run for Food event on Thanksgiving morning. I wasn't able to attend last year of this meeting, but you still funded us, and I really, really appreciate that. The event is, Siskiyou Food Assistance is now in our twenty-third year of serving emergency food to this community and all of South Siskiyou County now. This will be our twelfth Run for Food event on Thanksgiving Day, and the proceeds are used to purchase food for our emergency food pantry. It's very simple. We use all local vendors for poster printing, graphic design, photographer, DJ, refreshments, and Zumba warm-up. In 2023, there were a hundred and eight participants at our, it was freezing cold, but people still come out and they like to run and have a good time. And fifteen percent of those people return every single year. Fifty-seven percent of those people live in Weed. Fifteen percent were from Mount Shasta. Four percent were from Grenada. Two percent from Dunsmere and two percent from Montague. The other twenty percent came from central California, cities of Chico, Sacramento, Santa Cruz, Southern California, Torrance and Rosemead. And the other states represented were Oregon, Washington, and Colorado. So we did, we got lots of attention for Weed in that event. Do you have any questions for me about our request?
I can, I can attend, but I need a mini-walk.
That's fine. Walking's fine. That's what I'd be doing if I was there. So, and then I'm going to invite Yassa to come up and join me to talk about the Weed Farmers Market. Weed Farmers Market currently has four market managers. Yassa, who ran it in 2022?
Yes.
And I ran the Shastina Community Market for three years out in Lake Shastina. Tiffany Devault from Kindred Gardens, who's a vendor, and then Becca Larson from Pyroclastic Chocolates. And so it's nice to have the, we merged altogether last year, and it was nice to have the four of us. But it's, people like getting out in the evening on a hot summer day, and it's shady and cool at Bel Air Park, and they love buying fresh veggies. And so a lot, what we bring to the table is that we have the EBT set up so people with better low income and using EBT cards can take money off their card and spend it there at the market. We also have obtained market match funds, so for every, if they take twenty dollars off their EBT card, we can match that up to twenty dollars. So people can spend twenty and get forty dollars worth of fresh food. So.
Yeah, so it's a, the Weed Farmers Market's a fully volunteer-run event. It's a weekly event. It takes place all summer long, every Wednesday from three-thirty to six at Bel Air Park. And we're currently seeking funding for operational expenses. So park fees, musician fees. We have live music every week and some marketing and outreach support.
Our attendance this year, we started the last week of May, and our attendance that week was fifty-five, and then it went up to sixty-seven the following week and sixty-eight last, this week. So the attendance is increasing. We have signs around town now, a couple banners, and so we're trying to get the word out. Social media alone wasn't enough. So anyway, do you have any questions for us about that?
No, I can speak to it, though. I mean, I think the first year I helped out. Sue helped out a great deal. So we were, got two volunteers up here that put in a lot of time. So, and Denise, you put in a lot of time everywhere. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next is the Weed Historic Lumber Town Museum.
Anybody put in museum?
Hi, my name is Paul Shelton. I'm the new incoming manager for the Weed Historic Lumber Town Museum. And we have, our request, I guess, is already before you. So the primary thrust of the request is usually to cover expenses for wages for docents to conduct tours through the museum. And we have, I think we requested twenty-one this year for that. And also with that, I think we included another amount, twenty-three fifty, I believe, for revamping, refreshing the lighting in the large section of the building. The building's kind of built in thirds, where the first third is nineteen forty, the next third is nineteen fifty, and then the back room, the large display room, is nineteen ninety-one. And as I have, as I understand it, we received the lighting that is existing in that portion of the building as a hand-me-down, I think, was it from the elementary? When the elementary school was scrapped, the old one, the one before the one that's being scrapped now and rebuilt. So we're looking at replacing the ballast system in those to where the lighting is more consistent and a lot higher quality. We've done, we did the hallway a little bit this year on our own, and the difference is incredible. So looking forward to that. But as, if you don't know, we had a flood this year on January sixth that flooded the first two-thirds of the building, did not reach the back section only because it's built on a higher plane and there's a ramp, and the water could only climb about four or five inches up the ramp and then stop. But we are still trying to recover from that. We've entertained bids. Some of the work has been done. We needed some asbestos mitigation done, and that has been finished. Now we're at a point to where we're trying to coordinate bids to finish the remaining work that needs to be done. A lot of cleanup needs to be done, and all the displays need to be put back in place. And so we're entertaining bids to do that. And I've been working with Craig on this effort, trying to get the museum open. Normally, we would have opened the first, the last Saturday, Memorial Day weekend, through September thirtieth. So at this point, big question mark as to when we'll be able to complete the work and when we'll be able to open. So we'll keep you abreast of that. We'll announce that on our website and keep you abreast of when opening day really is. That's where we're at. Any questions on that?
I have a question. Who owns that building?
You do, the city.
Craig, how much were we looking at the quote on fixing that?
Excuse me. Right now, we have two quotes sent down to the insurance adjuster, and she is requesting a little bit more information. And we've got to get the carpet down. I hope to have him in next week repairing the carpet, and then it'll just be a matter of cleanup and putting back in the displays, and the crew will put back in the displays. But we got, we have some more cleanup to do there.
What is she questioning on the claim, the adjuster or he?
She.
Okay.
She's, she's out of San Francisco. She's never even been here to see the building, and it's a...
Surprise.
Yeah. It's been, it's been a real pain. But we got two different bids to clean it up, and she's wanting to understand the air scrubbers and stuff. So I sent her back some information today, and I'm hoping to see something early next week, and then we can get in there and try to get it cleaned up.
Appreciate the work on that, Craig.
Yeah. This is a part of our insurance, the SCORE program, and they have an adjuster that's not part of SCORE anymore? I don't understand how it's all working.
They're probably sending it out to an independent and...
And we have a twenty-five thousand dollar...
They're getting on the job training like a lot of people are right now.
We have a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible on that, too, so there's an unforcing cost. You know, I mean, there's a lot of those things that come up that have to be done, so.
So pending any more delays from this rogue adjuster, if we get this resolved in the next week and a half, what is our estimated time to be able to clean up and get the museum back open?
Probably three weeks, I'm hoping.
Okay, so we're looking at realistically end of July at this point?
Yeah.
Because of the insurance delays?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we're able to open by the end of July, we'll have August and September, two full months out of the four full months we normally would have. We're only open four months out of twelve, so that would give us half a season, you might say.
Does our SCORE policy pay us anything for loss of income?
I don't know on this particular...
I'm going to say probably not. I don't think it's in there to have to be looked up. But I need to apologize to the museum because if this would have been the way SCORE was ran before, it would have been opened way before June. It would have been taken care of.
The insurance market has changed considerably.
It has.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like this is an issue with the insurance company and their adjuster, not with the city or the museum. So apologies to the public that we can't enjoy our museum right now because of this insurance company. So thank you both for your work in pushing through those issues to try and get us back open. It's appreciated.
Thanks, Joe.
I'd just like to say one thing. I'd like, I am Shirley Satanida, and I am the president of the board at the museum. And I just want to thank all of you for all your hard work and supporting us.
Thank you. It is extremely important, especially these days, that we preserve our culture. You're not going to get where you're going if you don't know where you come from. So the museum is a big part of this community, and the community needs to continue to support them. All right, next is the Weed Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, I'm Nancy Irvine. I am the new executive committee head for the Weed Chamber of Commerce, and we are seeking TOT funds for continuation of funding for the operation of the visitor's center to help promote local economy and having guests visit local establishments, visiting surrounding sites and assist the community with copy and fact services, which we actually had customers today who were requesting that, and we found out that there weren't a lot of businesses that offered that. We also represent our businesses and provide information to general public. Funding also provides major events, including Chinese auction, Weed Carnival, Roland and Weed Car Show, and others that, and we are planning hopefully to have a new one called Lumber Mill Days. Downtown beautification is also part of keeping up with the planters and watering the flowers, and Tim and I have been working really hard on that project this year. And we also, the city is not limited to making of brochures, installation of signage outside of Weed, area to draw tourists and travelers to Weed, development of a media relations kit, development publications, Siskiyou County that features Weed as department point for Siskiyou County activities, familiarity tours, linking air access and proximity to Weed, development of promotional package that features outdoor activities in Siskiyou County. We have had annual city calendar of events, sponsoring annual events and fundraisers to help other agencies in the city, example, radio and TV advertisements surrounding areas with Reading and Medford, and to promote Carnival and all our other special events. The chamber is seeking fifty thousand for funding of the visitor's center. Thank you.
We have any questions from the council?
No, we've seen them all the time.
All right, and last but not least, the Winnebago Cemetery.
Hi, my name is Tom Mulvahill. I'm the president of the Winnebago Cemetery Association. I just wanted to talk about some of the things that the cemetery does to bring people into the town of Weed and spend some money there. We have funerals, of course, and people that come out, a lot of people come from out of town, and they'll stay at the motels and get gas and eat things also. And then we have, we've been told by many ministers and things that this is the best, most beautiful cemetery they've ever seen. Even then, I have people come off the freeway and drive in and talk to Wes and buy a plot. And you've seen our memorial display. We put up all the flags and everything in the Lincoln Heights Cemetery and in the other cemetery also. And Wes came up with a program where he's got plaques for people who might not have the money to be buried there, but they can buy a plaque for two or three hundred dollars. And that's how they can be represented. And also, I think it's important to take care of the cemetery, headstones and everything, of the people that helped build the city and were very important in putting everything together, and we should respect them and take care of their tombstones. Now Wes is going to tell you some things about some of the ways that we wanted to. Thank you, by the way, for the money from last year, too.
Yeah, it's Wes requesting that amount of there. We have plans of possibly paving a parking area by our shop and stuff for visitors and stuff to have services and everything. Also, I'm in touch with the state on getting some signs made, and I have to get the approvals naturally through the state highway to Caltrans and all of that. I was hoping to have one at the corner of California and Ninety-Seven, saying, "Winnebago Cemetery established nineteen oh six," to just kind of point it out to people as if you can't see it. And also at the intersection of Lincoln and Broadway in Ninety-Seven is, I would like to put a sign there saying Lincoln Heights Cemetery, Historic Black Cemetery, and then an established date. I don't know what that date is. You'll have to chase that down. But because most people aren't even aware that it's over there. You know, there's people in this town that have lived here, they don't even have a clue that that cemetery is back there. And this would maybe help get some people off the highway, come and see what we've had and part of our history. Because like you were saying earlier, you know, you don't know where you are unless you know where you've been type of thing. The cemeteries are, in my opinion, the, I'm pretty biased, is, they're really important for our town. They're important for people to understand where they're from, what they're doing, and, you know, hopefully appreciate some of the things that have taken place. Now, involved in that money in the past has been for our salaries and overheads that we have. And this year, like I said, I'm getting a larger amount or asking for a larger amount, primarily because I got the prices today for some of that paving. I would like to have three different projects over the years because they're expensive, naturally, you know. But that's kind of the long-term picture of what I have going on over there. And what I'd like to do, like if we get people to come in and visit, and they'll stay, you know. You're coming down Ninety-Seven, and you look at that mess out at Kerry Caddish, you know, and you think, my gosh, this is Weed, you know. And then you come around the corner, it's a beautifully manicured cemetery. And you go down around another corner, and you see the park, beautiful park there. We're rebuilding... We're rebuilding from the fire. And then down at the intersection, there's a nice little green plaza, the saw and all that stuff, you know. I think in my mind, those are the kind of things that'll attract people to come to our town and stay here, you know. But the first impression they'll have is out there. They see that mess out there, in my opinion, again, you know. But that is kinda where I'm at. Um, any questions?
No, but I wanna tell you, I do appreciate that when I go out there and you guys find the flags all out.
Aren't they beautiful? Yeah. Oh, thank you. We take a lot of pride in it. And uh those flags are, are a lot of that is courtesy of Todd and Debbie Wilson. You know, they're the ones that got the initial grants to get the flags and all of that.
And they're still continuing to get the.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, and over at Lincoln Heights, they were able to um get a, a similar grant. To get fifty flags over there that we have up and down the roads and around and it's all over over there, you know. But they look beautiful. Yeah, thank you.
Just continue to go on and work through this tunnel, so we can pave roads.
Yeah, cuz I don't know if you've been into the Lincoln Heights Cemetery, but the road is just dirt. And presently it's just a muddy mess, you know, cuz we're irrigating and everything. And um that's my ultimate goal is to get the single lane all the way to the back of that. But it's pretty expensive, so it'll be a year or two before you pull it off. Maybe, depends, I'm trying to, depends on. Yes, it is. Yes, it is. It's pretty fascinating, actually, you know, once you get into it. But uh, anything else?
I'd just like to mention here again, hurrah for the, the crew over there to keep this going. I mean, we, we don't have a cemetery di- uh district. We don't have funding. I mean, for years we've been trying to work out some type of uh long-term funding and we've yet to do it. We, we had a uh vote, uh an election that kind of, that we lost. What was the numbers on that?
It was just by a few.
Seven, seven votes.
Seven, seven votes, which would have helped out here and I, I want the public to understand that the, this, this has been carried on through tradition more than anything. It's not for people making money over on, on, on the cemetery.
Absolutely.
And, and there's some long-term residents here that uh, that have kept this thing alive. But we, it's time for the communities. We have to find some permanent funding. This idea that we're gonna have to borrow, I mean, you wanna beg, beg for money, uh there, there should be an established fund for, for our cemeteries.
That would be nice, that's for sure. I thought we were awfully close at one time with the sales tax and the twenty-five, uh twenty-five cents on a hundred dollars. I think, I don't know what it was, a quarter percent or whatever it was, as of last year, I think we tried to do that. And that would have really.
We tried against it.
Eliminated a lot of problems.
We tried.
But um, you know, we, at the cemetery, our labor, we only work, we only get paid for six months out of the year. You know, from April first to October first. And then from October first to April first, I volunteer over there, you know, raking stuff up and, and things like that. Other volunteers come and help clean up, like you were saying earlier about volunteers and helping out. But it's important, in my mind, in my mind, that we maintain it, keep it looking nice, bring it up to at least the nineteen seventies standard as far as parking and stuff, you know. And uh it would make a much nicer thing for people coming in.
I'd also let, one, one other thing is the, the cost, I mean, our, to be buried in our cemetery is much more affordable than going to Mount Shasta.
That's.
Much more, and, and, and for the long-term uh residency, if you, if you look back, say forty, forty years ago. There was, it was neglected. It was totally neglected.
Yes, I, I, did you guys see those pictures that they handed out earlier?
I haven't seen them yet, but it, it's just.
Kind of a before and after, Bob.
It, it, without this concern, I mean, we, we would, we would have nothing to be proud of when we came into the cemetery, for sure.
Do you guys have any backup reserve funding?
We have some, yes. You know what I mean? We have a certain amount of savings, but it's uh, you stop and look at it, it's not enough to really. They keep us going for a year, maybe two years, you know, but other than that, it's nothing. If we don't have a um, well, it's kind, it's such an ugly thing to talk about, it's a cemetery, but if you don't sell a lot of plots, you know. Then uh, that's where our actual source of income is.
Do you get private donations?
So, yes, we do. We get, but a lot of, a lot of those are like twenty dollar, a hundred dollar type of things. And you start talking about thousands of dollars, it's kinda tough to make ends meet um with that. I mean, I appreciate the donations, don't misunderstand it, that they're so uh small and everything, they don't really, it's just a drop. Kinda like you guys were talking earlier about your guys' budget, you know. But um, that's where we get our income, is sale of plots and donations.
Have you ever increased the, the cost of plots?
Yes, we just did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't believe it. It's uh, we increased it.
That's a horrible topic, I know.
I, I know, I hate bringing it up, but the um, it's, the thing is, it's important. Because it is important for us to keep it inexpensive, so people can afford to get buried. My gosh, you know, it's, you could run tens of thousands of dollars with a heartbeat, you know. I don't know what the plots are around the county, but ours are fifteen hundred dollars for a full burial. And you put two people in it, you know, a casket and a cremation, and eleven hundred dollars for cremation. And you put two of them in that plot. And anywhere else, there's nothing like that. We can make it so people can afford to be buried in their own town, you know, at their own, you know, without breaking the bank. Anything else, guys?
I, Wes, I have a question about the sign. Were you planning on putting the sign on your own property?
I wasn't planning, no. I was hoping to get the state to do it, to be honest with you.
Oh, okay.
I talked to Craig a little bit about it to see if I was on the right track and.
He thinks he can do that? He thinks, you think he can?
He might be able to, yeah. We actually have a new person in encroachment permits for Caltrans and they um so far seem to be like pretty good.
What's that?
It may work out. He can try. We'll try it, so.
But that's kinda where, the signs I think would be really a big help for us, you know. Um, on the fourth of this last month, I had some families call me, been in touch with me from Moses Lake, Washington. And they wanted to bury their mother here. And so I've been delving, delving, and they said they'll come down and do it. And four carloads full of people from Moses Lake, Washington came down here and brought their own pastor with them. And did the services. They stayed here in town, you know, ate here, bought flowers here, did the whole thing, you know. And I thought it was pretty cool, you know, and I think having signs, especially for Lincoln Heights. We get a few more people off the highway to come in and take a look. Come on, this is part of our history, you know, and it's, it's part of it. Now, I think something we should be proud of, you know, but uh that's the signs, that's the object behind that, so, you know. I hope. Anything more for me?
Any other questions?
Get out here, quit talking.
Everybody wants us to pass the money out.
Yeah, oh, sure, sure.
All right, well, that was our.
I have one thing. I'm Paula Rosetto and I guess you could call me the assistant financial secretary for the cemetery. And the donations were brought up. Last year, most of our donations came from two funerals, two families that had put in the obituary in lieu of flowers. Donations to the Winnebago Cemetery. That's how we get most of our donations. We have a few regulars that give, you know, quarterly. Uh Memorial Day, we might get a few, or a family member, or if our family might decide to, you know, give a larger amount. But most of our donations last year came from two obituaries.
Thank you.
So I do have a question. Um, is the organization structured as a five oh one C three or nonprofit that you can uh?
It's a five oh one three C.
Okay. Seeing that may be another option for donations is getting uh businesses to donate for tax purposes, so.
It's a perfect world, yeah, you know what I mean, but everybody gets tapped up pretty hard, you know, and all the businesses and things like that. Solano's was really well, really helpful in donating a lot of the materials for this wall that I had built, the little plaques that we sell. Which are for people that have been cremated and had their ashes spread around the county. And uh, yeah, and uh then we sell these plaques, so at least they could put their name on a wall and show that they lived in Weed. You know, people that have lived here for many years, uh moved, passed away somewhere else, died, buried there. And then nobody knows they were here, you know. That's why we have that wall. But Solano's helped a tremendous amount. I have a list of sponsors on that, on the wall itself, you know, to explain it. But yeah, it's hard to get too much, you know what I mean? Could ask, but, cuz that's what I did. I hustled around the cemetery or the museum, everybody else that I knew. Asking for money for donations and we finally raised uh four thousand dollars and got it built. But, you know, can only do that so often, so many times. Excuse me. Anything else?
No, I think that's it. Thank you. All right. Now, last year we went through and made adjustments. Um, what's our plan for this year? Do we have any council members that wanna make a lot of adjustments with what they've got here?
I would make one point on the city of Weed. Again, I know, Tim, Tim and I are at odds about this a little bit, but I wanna point out to the council that if, we just looked at a budget for twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five. Where it says on the first page, about five lines down, ten, the number is ten dash oh oh one dash three oh seven. Transient, transient occupancy tax. The budget said four thirty-five, our actual was about two eighty-eight. So we made some corrections. Our revised budget was three fifty, four ninety-nine, of which I'm taking, that's where we get our seventy-one thousand. So with that said, the seventy-one thousand is what we're passing out to the volunteer organizations of the city of Weed, these folks. The other two hundred and eighty thousand already goes to the city of Weed, to its general fund, if I'm not mistaken. And my finance director will probably correct me if I'm wrong. And I can appreciate the fact that we do need all of the things that the police department does, all the things that Public Works does. And all the things that the fire department does and anybody else involved in any of these things. Except that should be in our, in my opinion, in the general budget and not in the TOT uh budget as far as what we pass out. So I will explain, that's one of my reasons why there's a big goose egg, so um, or actually three of them. Three. I'm, I'm laying a badge, anyway.
So um, and I will echo that sentiment with my opinion there. Um, while as an event organizer, I do greatly appreciate um the work that the police department, the fire department, Public Works has done. And uh having been out there at six in the morning, putting barricades up and building stages and things like that. Uh, we couldn't have done these events that I've been a participant of without that. Uh, with that said, the spirit of the law for this tax was that we were taxing the people who visit our city, the heads and beds. So that we could bring events and cultural um continuations that bring those people here. And so I do share the opinion that that should be part of our general fund from our budget. To cover the expenses that we require for our city uh staff to support all of the organizations in doing that. Um, I know it's not a popular opinion, but I'm gonna give you the honest truth as I see it, whether you like it or not, and that's just where that is. With that said, um, you know, we do need to focus as we're getting our budget corrected and going into what will be the first year. Um, twenty-five years I've paid attention to it, that I think will have the most sound budget. Um, that's something we need to take into consideration is how to fund for those events so that we can support having those. Um, you know, things like Carnival that we've had for decades, um, we need to support things like that, you know, and continue to have those. That's part of our history.
And I know from our police and our public works and our fire department, these are all projected. I get that part. I, I, and it's no reflection on the job that you guys do. Please don't get me misunderstood, don't misunderstand me, so.
I'm not saying we don't need to pay the, our staff for doing the work. I'm just saying that that money needs to come from the general fund and not from the taxpayers that come through our system.
And that allows us to do more on the bottom side.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes.
If, if we cut and, and use that TOT tax for the events, you're gonna cut services. You're gonna cut services from somewhere else because our budgets has been using that money, utilizing that money just to have the services we have. Say, just street sweeping, so we can't street this, sweep the streets in front of the motels. You know what I mean? You're gonna cut services if you cut money out of our budgets, so. I just wanna throw that out there. The money is being used for services right now.
So, I'll add to that. So, when I became the chief in twenty nineteen, the following year, my overtime budget was cut by thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, and it's remained that even with Colas since then. Now, I have more requests this year than ever before for police security at events. So I, now I have uh an upcoming event in July. They want three days instead of two of overnight, not including the extra staff it takes for the event while it's occurring. I had a request for two events downtown recently for overnight security. The option here is to do as other cities do and, and do a asset recovery fee for either barricades and public work time. Or for if they actually wanna hire police, police as security. Other cities do charge a fee for that. That would have to be established at another meeting, but that, that's an option. Um, but you need to look at my, if you wanna go to four two one, four zero two. That overtime budget for the year does not cover if every person that I have on staff takes their full vacation time. So I'm constantly trying to balance that budget, so that's why we're asking for that, for these extra events. So maybe in the future, we may need to look at that asset recovery fee.
Right, and I understand the hardship. I mean, the, the plain fact and everyone in this room, from the city to the people in the audience and those of us on this DS understand is that. Costs are increasing, inflation's a real issue, and we're not all gonna have the money we need and there's gonna be some painful areas to, to consider in the future. Um, you know, with that said, I'm very optimistic that our current staff and council will correct some of the mistakes the city's made in the past. In regards to losing business and those four forms of revenue between downtown and et cetera. So um, we're all gonna have to tighten our belts and uh make do with what we have.
And another thing, maybe those overnights is not something we should be doing.
Right.
In other words, if they're taking money out of the budget that you don't have, or Public Works doesn't have, or whoever doesn't have. Then maybe we can kinda maybe take a look at.
Right, and I, I did say no on the two previous, but the, this one has become more of a expected thing every year. And it's been something we've done ever since I've been an officer here. Um, but this year it's gone from two to three because last year there was a lapse in security on one night and I recommended it go to three. Because we were able to maintain some security that night, but it was very vulnerable, so I would like to see it stronger, so that's why we're going to three nights this year.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and staff, uh, most communities and most cities that put on events like that are by the chamber or whomever. Typically, they'll hire private security or off-duty officers for those type of events too. And I'm, Justin and I have talked about that a, a few times. We don't do a whole lot of that around here, but a lot of communities do that. So at some point, we may wanna talk to some of the event um folks and talk to them about possibly looking at that as an alternative as well, so.
Well, the other alternative is this, we're successful in passing this money out and it generates more revenue. It generates more tax.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I will say.
Again, it's a flip-flop.
In regards to the security, um, I was one of the members from the chamber that hosted the steampunk event. We did buy our own private security and they did a great job. And that was a lot lower cost than the city's cost would have been for PD. Now, as a business owner that has attended events as a business owner, I appreciate the work that PD does in keeping that safe, but I agree. but I agree there, and I'm going to be unpopular when I go to the more BD next week for the chamber, but I will say that all the organizations that do events here, whether it be the chamber, Rotary, et cetera, it's time for us to step up and take care of some of those things instead of, because the city cost with CalPERS and the overtime allotment and all that is a lot higher than hiring a private.
And potential workers' comp claims.
Exactly.
It just goes on and on, so.
So that is, again, I might not be popular here in this DS for some of my opinions, and I'm not going to be popular with my, my nonprofits I serve, but you got to go with what's the most efficient, both for costs and for both entities involved.
Popularity contests come every four years.
And you can feel free to send me all your hate mail via email. It's on the city website. I get those already. I'd rather you tell me what your opinion is, good, bad, or indifferent, than hold it in.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just add one, one thing. You know, what we're talking about is tradition. I mean, we have dependencies. See, all of the entities, including the city, have been used, traditionally have used this, this as part of their budgets. And if we're not going to do that, maybe we should be talking about another percentage. If it's 20%, maybe we need to, but I think the main thing is to understand that this, this, this is tradition. There's people that have been depending on this, and I think that changing the, the, what heads and beds really is, I mean, maybe that's the discussion we should, should, should be having. You clean, clean it up, what, what is it? But what, historically, I've, I've been here, this is the 16th year, and it's, it's, I just watched, it's, it's dependency. There's a dependency on this, not only on the, for the city, but everybody else, too. So we should have another town hall meeting.
Maybe we should do a quarter penny tax.
Well.
Nice.
I think.
That would be a great idea.
She had light goes on.
Yes.
So my, my opinion here is that, again, we all recognize we rely on this, this TOT funding, everybody in this room. So this TOT funding, like, has been stated many times, comes from heads and beds. So part of that is not just volunteerism amongst our community. Well, I appreciate all of us who do volunteer. We need to have more collaboration. You know, we, when you look at cities like Waireka, they don't have a Chamber of Commerce anymore. The only fraternal organization that still exists there is Alliance Club, and they're struggling. You know, we've lost the Alliance here. We've, we've lost Kiwanis here. You know, we need to have more collaboration amongst all of these organizations, you know, between the city and these entities, and between the entities with each other, if nothing else for promotion. You know, having signage, having social media drives. When people come into my business, I promote things for Rotary, I promote things for the chamber, I promote people to go to the museum and the cemetery, and everybody needs to work together to help with this, because next year, if we don't bring in more tourism now, then there's going to be less money to hand out, and we all know our bills are going to increase across the board. So something that I hope everyone here takes, takes home with them tonight. Let's work together to try and make this coffer larger for next time, so that we can fund everything 100% and not spend an hour deliberating and sharing opinions. So with that said, this is the point where we make changes, if any.
So when I look at this, Sandy, can you help me out? The average is $8,500 for City of Weed?
Correct.
Yeah, the average for every entity is all in yellow.
Okay. It's orange on my screen.
Yeah, it's orange on my screen, Jeremy. You two messed up their average. I'm, I'm happy with what I do.
Me, too.
I, so I, I don't know. I want a quarter penny sales tax. Or at least give people the choice.
He just likes to dig, that's okay.
I do.
Well, I'm sure there will come a time where y'all can share opinions on that one way or another, but this is not the time, so.
I would, I would still like to take the eight, if we took that 85 away, we have a lot more to deal with on everyone.
So I guess, the question is, are there any council members who want to make a change or allocation?
Yeah. Next year.
Okay, well, if there are no changes, then I think we are ready to entertain a motion to move forward with this as it's presented here.
Are you approving the averages for all?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the TOT funding as set by the averages.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any public comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. We will now move on to discussion item only, proposed downtown facade improvement program.
Mr. Mayor, before you, we talked about this in our work session earlier. I've got a proposal for a facade improvement program within our downtown district to offset the cost of some beautification, you know? As the city manager, when you talk to a lot of folks, one of the big things that they complain about is some of the storefrontage along Main Street. And several cities have programs where they do a facade improvement program and put it in place where the city will match a one-to-one with a business. That everything has to be, there's lots of criteria, lots of hoops to jump through. It's not something where you just walk up with a sketch and say, I want $25,000. That's not how it works. Everything has to go through our planning reviews, our permit applications, whether it be for signs, facades, murals, windows, new windows, those type of things, entries into businesses. So I've got that here before you for just an information item only, and I'll give you another month to look it over and possibly come back with some discussion and another proposal. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions from the council? We have a lot of homework to do. Okay. Now we'll move on to staff reports. And we'll start with Chief Duncan.
All right. As you said, weed abatement, inspections are underway. Please chop your weeds down, so I don't have to write you a letter. Costs a lot of money to write, I did 300 letters last year, so. We're trying to streamline that. We have a new computer program that we're putting this stuff into. If we had people's emails, we could just email them a letter, but, which we're working on getting those. However, a lot of people are out of town, so, you know, baking lots and stuff like that. So it's a work in progress. Most of the people comply and, and are good about it. So you'll see our trucks driving around town. If they're driving slow next to lots, it's because we're, we're taking pictures and sending those to people, so. With that said, there is a lot of tall grass that looks green, but it's dry underneath. So we've had a couple of big fires already. One of them in Gazelle, and one in Montague, and then we just had a fire at 812 the other night. So Cal Fire is suspending the residential weed burn permits as of Monday, and so are we. So if you have yard waste that needs to be burned, you better do it this weekend. Because as of Monday, 8 o'clock, there will be no more burn permits issued, because fire season has officially started, so. And that's the same thing in the county. They are suspending those, too. All of our, we have eight sleepers, seven of them got hired, Cal Fire, so they'll be leaving. So we do have three seasonal positions, so appreciate that. We're, we're able to pay for those positions with money that we made on fires, so didn't cost the city any extra money for that.
Do you have, do you have those three people?
We have them, yeah.
Oh, good.
They're on duty already. So they're on a 48-96 schedule, so they work two days off four. So 24 hours a day, we have at least one person, and then a chief officer. So two people all the time, full-time. Now, they, obviously, if they go on vacation or they're sick, they're, they're not covered for that day, and we don't fill it with overtime, so. They're just straight 24 and 96 suppression people. It's working out pretty good, so.
Thanks, Dean.
Appreciate that. That's all I got. Thanks.
Director Porterfield.
So we got a lot going on in the finance department. We lost a very valued employee to retirement this week, and she was loved very dearly by many of us. Mary Mazzoni, we miss you. We have brought on a new employee to replace her, Jamie Keen. She's doing great, fits in great here, we love her. We are starting, starting 22-23 audit as of yesterday. And my plan is this audit should be a, a, a lot less painful than the 21-22 audit was. It's also not a single audit, which is easier, which means we don't have over $750,000 in federal expenditures in the 22-23 fiscal year. So it will be an easier audit that way. The goal is to have that done this summer, and we are scheduled in October to start 23-24. And then we'll be caught up on audits. And we're also looking at, as we discussed earlier, a implementation of new software, which we want to go live January 1st. So lots of stuff going on for us.
Thank you. Director Scher.
Just, we get a lot of construction going around town. We got, you know, the power companies out here doing a lot of things. We're going to add to it with our construction getting started in different areas, so it's going to be a busy summer here in town. So that's all I got.
Chief Mayberry.
Just a couple of things. June 20th is the planned date for the rabies vaccination clinic, which will be held outside here. Dogs must be on leashes, cats must be in carriers. There is a fee with that, and I'm not 100% certain, I think it's $15, plus you'll be able to get the distemper on top of that, as, for an additional fee. We'll get that flyer up on the Facebook page, probably, hopefully by tomorrow. To kind of go back to what you said with the CHP, it was a busy month in May. Just some numbers, 900, and we seized 952 plants, marijuana plants. We seized over 500 pounds of processed marijuana, a few illegal firearms, and some asset forfeiture cash, that's all going up, you know, through the process, through the courts. But, yeah, busy month for, for a small department.
Good job.
Yes. Our city clerk.
Yeah, this week, we did the launch of our new website. I'm not the techiest of people, but I got it done. With some help, I'd say. So there, there is some improvements, or there is some edits that still need to be done. I'm, I am working on the back of it to get all the information uploaded and corrected. There is also a app for your phone for the City of Weed. So if you go to your app store, you can download the app for the City of Weed, and there are push notifications that we are launching for information. One was on the movie night for tomorrow night, and the other one was just on the fire department's burn permits. So that's a quick way to get information out to our community members, the push notifications. So if you do have members in the community that have iPhones or smartphones, have them download the city app, so we can get the information out to them quickly. So that's all I have, and I'm excited for the movie night tomorrow night.
All right, City of Weed moving into the 21st century. It's awesome.
Hey, you can't be better with the Goonies. Goonies are movie app.
Right. All right, our city attorney.
I'm sorry I will miss the free movie night, but I do recommend the Goonies to anyone who hasn't seen it.
It's a classic.
That concludes my.
If you, if you go to Astoria, you can take the Goony tour and see where all the.
I didn't take the tour, because I've never seen the movie.
Oh, well, it's a good movie. Yeah, when I went to ICMA last fall and ran with, ran into this company with, it's called Aptigie, the one that's building the website, and we get an app to go with it, and they explained this push notification for community events and things like that, so we can. Bob, we can also have a billboard and an app where people can see what ballgames are going on and those type of things. So I think this would be a, and it's a, it's strictly a push notification app. It's not a social media type page where you're going to go on and complain about a bunch of stuff. It's just pushing information to the citizens, so.
So who's putting on the information in onto the app?
The person in charge of all the information for the city, so. He's in charge of keeping all the.
Information central, just, just send her an email. Over and over again.
And just one other, just a quick announcement, that's all I had to say on that. Before we leave, I'd like to talk to my staff in Chief Mayberry's office real quick, and I'd like the council, if you could hang out for just one quick second after the meeting, I'd like to visit with you just real quickly, with the city attorney, too.
All right, well, that is it for staff reports.
Oh, could, could I, is there an update on the new businesses coming in as far as?
The Wendy's will be open on July the 4th, that weekend of July 4th. The, the Dollar Tree is a one penny tree now, because it's not going to happen. The developer went under, so.
We have a lot of material on site.
Yeah. No, 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 we don't want to encourage that. No pillaging. The, the developer is taking care of all that, the removal. The Chicken Shanty should be open soon, hopefully. And then we've also got some stuff going on, potential gas station down on South Weed. And I believe the Chocolateeer Lady is supposed to be open pretty soon as well. The Pyro Technics, whatever.
Pyro Chocolates, yeah, they've made some big improvement.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I apologize. And I forgot, we had another gas station that's going to, that's proposed right on the other side of grocery outlet as well. So directly across from Pilot. So, yeah. So we've got, Bob, there's your gas tax. And just to let everybody know, one of the reasons why you saw a pretty good dip in the TOT overall for this next year is because we had one substantially large motel that's been shut down, red-tagged for the past, what, 18 months or so? But they are working on repairing and getting it up to date, so, which is good news, so.
How about new ownership at the brewery?
Yeah, I think that took place about a year ago. Yeah. Yep.
I didn't know. Apparently, I don't drink enough beer.
It's right down the street from your house, so.
I don't, you know what? That means I have to walk back drunk.
You shouldn't be drunk, that's right. You, you got that.
All right, well, that's good news that we've got some businesses opening, some interest. It's a shame the Dollar Tree developer went under, but that happens, so.
Retail is changing as we speak, so, thanks to Amazon and Timu or whatever it's called, so.
Shoes for $7.95.
On that note, I would encourage everybody, the, the six people I've been informed now that follow along at home, make sure you tell your friends to spend their dollars here locally on things that are made in America as opposed to things from Timu. We have a motion, or a second?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we are adjourned.